We're at a crossroads. From time to time, a section of rail needs repair, but that doesn't mean the whole line needs replacement. The same way being proud of your history doesn't mean you're stuck in the past. No, we're not stuck. We hear the whistle blowing and we're inspired. Inspired by the legacy of the people who transformed this terrain into a rail yard that supplied America with the ore needed to win world wars. We're inspired by our unshakable identity, hanging tight like David facing down Goliath, and we're moved by stories of our community's kindness. No matter who needs help, neighbors pitch in and get the job done. Hushed and humbled are more at play than pontification, but don't for one second think that means Proctor is a simple small town. It was built as a company town and it continues down the tracks of time. And this rail revival is our destination.
We'll call to order the regular school board meeting of October 9th, 2023. We'll begin with the pledge of allegiance. The flag is right behind us here. There? Thank you, Ted. We'll begin with the roll call, please.
McDonald.
Here.
Parmeeter.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Pocarnich.
Here.
Podgornik.
Here.
Shelton.
Ward.
Here.
Reagan Pazek and Abigail Shunk. Thank you.
Thank you. Item four on the agenda is an approval of the agenda as presented in your packet. There's just one addition of a word in item nine, A personnel number 10. It should say create an American Indian student family liaison position. The word Indian was omitted. Looking for a motion to approve?
So moved by Amy.
There's a motion by Amy. Is there a second? Thank you. Does anyone have any questions regarding our agenda tonight? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed, and that motion carries. Item five is looking for an approval of the minutes of the regular school board meeting of September 25th, 2023. Looking for that motion.
So moved Kim.
There's a motion by Kim. Is there a second?
Yeah, I can second it, Jim.
Thank you, Jim. Does anyone have any questions regarding the minutes tonight? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed, and that motion carries. Moving on to the finance report, this motion will be to approve the payment of bills dated October 9th, 2023 in the amount of $151,068.49, covering checks 117422 through 117542. Looking for a motion?
So moved by Amy.
There's a motion by Amy. Is there a second?
I'll second it, Larry.
Thank you, Larry. Does anyone have any questions about the finance report tonight? Thank you. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed, and that motion carries. Moving on to commendations and congratulations. The board would like to send congratulations to Fall Homecoming Royalty, King Candidates Zachary McPhee, Dane Omen, Cameron Pease, Nicholas White, and Tanner Wiss, and Queen Candidates Eden Gizwald, Ellen McLean, Sienna Saleen, Ella Walker, and Reagan Zwicki. Congratulations to Dane Omen and Ella Walker for being crowned king and queen. We'll move on then to public comment. The school board meeting is a business meeting of the school district that occurs in the public. It is not a public forum. The public comment portion of our meeting is a time where we offer an opportunity for members of the public to address the board. Once we move from this portion of our meeting, members of the public will no longer be allowed to address the board. As a general rule, the board will listen to members of the public but will not comment on or respond to any comments made by speakers. The board will not engage in dialogue, though any board member may ask questions. Please do not include the names of Proctor Public School students or employees, their title or building location, in your remarks for your own legal protection and the legal rights of our students and staff. Issues related to school district employees can be made in writing and can be directed to the Human Resources Department at Proctor Public Schools. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak. Speakers may not roll their time to another speaker. Please begin your presentation by stating your name, including the spelling, and who you represent if applicable. In the spirit of fairness to all participants, the board requests that you respect this format. Thank you for taking the time today to attend this meeting and share your concerns. I haven't heard from anyone that might be here that they'd like to address the board, but I'll certainly offer and open it up for anyone that would like to speak during public comments tonight. Certainly. Go ahead and go to the podium. You don't have to adjust the mic. They'll adjust it on the other end.
I'm happy to represent the district. I met on September 28th, superintendent of school board. Unfortunately, the SRO issue practice has been affected in the same way, but it really does. The language has changed. The AG office had a first opinion and a second opinion. I met with everybody after the second opinion, you know, a week after, to make sure that it was going to work. Because the way the language got written in 2023, it affects school resource officers and it affects agents of the school, our teachers, our principals, superintendents. So it does affect the school boards properly today. And that's why there's like 40-something that have changed how they're doing everything in the school system. So I've been staying with a special session for the beginning of August. I've got to change my position. And I know there are meetings in the week that will be done in capital. I hope we get it done before February. I think it's too late. We don't go back to session until February 12th. So it shouldn't wait. This needs to get clarified. It could be a get in one day and get this resolved so the wording is accurate, so it works for everybody, agents of the school, school boards, liability, insurance, it's just going on and on. So that's been a lot of time on that. But on positive notes, I mean, we got the four and 2%. I was hoping for the five and five because we had a $20 billion surplus. It didn't happen that way. I thought it should have happened because the five and 5% that I was supporting included 250 for the reading initiative instead of 40-something million because we've got, you know, 30 to 50% of our kids in Minnesota can read at grade level. And to me, that's the greatest discrimination we can have. So I wanted reading to happen in the mental health, closing the gap after a pandemic. Coming out of the pandemic, I think, is going to be crucial for support with kids. I was at Hermantown today with the robotics and the artificial and all the intelligence and all the way they're teaching. It's just amazing. So what I want to thank you, I'm hoping to get the SRO issue resolved sooner than later and try to keep you updated in the journals and any other way. So thank you for all you do, and I just wanted to let you know that's the latest.
Thank you. Any other questions? I don't have any up hand. Anyone else? Board members?
Well, thanks.
No.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here tonight that would like to address the board? Okay, we'll close public comment then. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented in your packet? There's a motion by Lynn. Is there a second?
Yeah, I can second it. Or Larry?
All right, I heard Jim. All right, perfect. Does anyone have any questions regarding our consent agenda tonight? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 And those opposed, and that motion carries. Item 10, items for individual action. Item 10A, adopt the resolution of accepting gifts received, a gift on September 15th, 2023, from Theodore and Barb Schweder for $20 with the suggested use of the cross-country team for Caleb, and gifts received on September 22nd, 2023, a donation from Pike Lake Presbyterian Women with a gift of $100 with the suggested use of the Pike Lake Special Ed Program. Looking for a motion?
I'll make it, Larry.
A motion by Larry. Is there a second?
Second by Amy.
Thank you very much, Amy. Does anyone have any questions regarding these gifts? It's a resolution that requires a roll call when you're ready, Lynn.
Ward.
Yes.
Shelton.
Yes.
Pocarnich.
Yes.
Podgornik.
Yes.
McDonald.
Yes.
Parmeeter.
Yes.
Peterson, yes, unanimously approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 10B, approve the Proctor area community center lease between Proctor Public Schools and the City of Proctor commencing July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2033. Looking for a motion?
I'll make it, Larry.
There's a motion by Larry. Is there a second?
Yeah, I can second it, Jim.
Okay, sounds good, Jim. Does anyone have any questions regarding this agreement? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed, and that motion carries. Item 10C, approve the overnight trip request from Ted Kiefet to take the AV leadership group to Long Beach, California for a Student Television Network working conference on March 13 through 17, 2024. Looking for a motion?
So moved by Amy.
There's a motion by Amy. Is there a second?
I'll second it, Larry.
Thank you, Larry. Ted, did you want to address the board with just some information since it's a trip request? Thank you.
First off, what you copy kind of overview I'm handing you is talks about the contest that STN, the Student Television Network, does throughout the year. Some of the stuff we're looking on the second page talks about the conference in Long Beach. Just so that you have that information.
Thank you.
I believe I have enough for everyone.
Thank you, sir.
Look at that. Glad I find it. So last year, we joined up for curriculum and other things, we joined a group called STN, Student Television Network. It's actually the group that I did my conference through this last summer down in Springfield, Missouri. And they have really kind of changed how they are doing things and how they are continuing to try to drive student participation in broadcasting, filmmaking, and so on. And one of the things that they do is they do a working conference every year. This working conference this year will be, or in March, will be held in Long Beach, California. And by working conference, I mean, they have all the breakout sessions, stuff that we would all go to for our regular conferences, but they also have competitions all four days in broadcasting, filmmaking. They give them prompts and things like that and say, okay, this is your prompt, this is what you have to have, this is what you have to say, you have five hours, go make your movie. And right there in Long Beach, they go and put their script together, they put their film together, they do all their editing and so on. On the front page, we're practicing one of those on the very top, the 60-second horror film. All of our kids right now are actually participating, and that is one of their big deals every year. This year, they have to use the word "is it over?" And they have to have a mirror in there somehow. They have to use some kind of footage from a 1964 older horror movie because that means it's a public domain, anybody can use it, there's no copyright issues, and they cannot have a cellphone in it. That makes me really happy because a lot of times you see the kids, they're still reading scripts and stuff off their phones. You can see their face highlighting in the lovely blue hue, but they're not going to be able to use that. And these are all contests that spark that, just like football and basketball and I could have said the wrong thing, math league, things like that. It's that same deal, but for these kids to create their arts and have those competitions. So really hoping to do this this year will be with our leadership kids. I know that Ray has talked about that, Ms. Pazek, and it's been a great start. The kids that we have in it right now are creating ideal curriculum that they're presenting and to their peers and actually having that leadership role. They're me at a broadcast. We had a football game last homecoming. I was pushed out. I normally have a headset and I get to have input, and I was pushed out. I didn't get a headset, nothing. And Ray and Evan ran the whole show with a three-camera setup. And it's those kids who we're hoping to take with us, and if we get the approval, it'll be eight kids, two chaperones. The dollar figure in there is not correct, as when I talked with Carrie, it was going to be a little, flights are very expensive these days. But she didn't get me the exact number, but she was thinking somewhere 15 to 17 per student and adult. And my request, if we move forward, is that Molly Hag, since her daughter's there and she's done the field trips with us, would be that other chaperone for that other half. And it would be perfect because it would be four young men and four young ladies, so we only have to have four rooms that would balance out really well. I don't know. Anything else I can answer or anything for anybody?
And students would fundraise?
Yes, we'll be fundraising. That is correct. It might be kind of like the band trip where the district kind of helps us with that, because it's that same kind of company where we do all the, the full dollar, they book everything for us, and then we make the payments, that type of deal. But yes, we are looking at doing all the fundraising. That's why we really wanted to get on tonight's docket so that we could start doing that fundraising right now.
Thank you. Does anyone have any other specific questions that weren't touched on yet?
No, it's an awesome opportunity, Ted.
Thanks for finding.
Yeah, thanks for entertaining it. We appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, there's a motion and a second and conversation about the overnight trip. Any other conversation? All right, we'll go for a vote. All those in favor of approving the overnight trip request, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed, and that motion carries. Thank you. Moving on then to item 11. Wow, items for discussion and information. We'll start with the superintendent update.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Educate, engage, inspire. Say it over and over and over again because that's what we should be doing every day. Our keynote speaker for the Massa Conference that's going on at the DECK brought that up again, said, make sure that every meeting that you start, every curriculum directory, every time you have a curriculum advisory board meeting, you say educate, engage, inspire. What is the vision of your district? What is it that you're going to do? And this is what we do, educate, engage, and inspire. So I just want to thank Ted again for that presentation, for Representative Selesnikar for talking a little bit about what we're dealing with, with even an SRO issue. It's all about education, engagement, and inspiration. And so our strategic plan, we've talked about the student achievement, that we're going to increase academic achievement by providing quality Tier One instruction for all students. And we had a curriculum advisory board meeting tonight, and rather than have me prattle on about so many of the great things that happened there, I'm going to have Judy, I did warn her too, that she's going to be up, so I don't want you to think that she's coming in cold. But one of the things that you'll see is that she's going to reference some of the very same slides that you had in your packet for tonight as well. So Judy, thank you for being here.
I'll just give you a quick synopsis. So at our curriculum advisory board tonight, we talked a little bit about the curricular teams that we'll be meeting this year. So we have all of our content areas, K5 English Language Arts, 612 English Language Arts, Math, Science, and Social Studies meeting, and going through the, just the implementation phases and looking at our standards and the various things that all of that entails. So we'll be doing that. We also shared the data with our curriculum advisory board, and overall, there's a positive trend. We've seen some really nice growth, and I'm looking at MCAs when I say that. We've seen some nice achievement levels there and growth in our proficiency. We also recognize we have work to do in that, and so that our, and our admin team will also address that in November when we present the world's best workforce. So I don't want to steal their thunder, but we do have some planning that we're working on and how we really can focus on some Tier One instruction and have some ideas on what we can do with that. And then we spoke a little bit also at the curriculum advisory about the implementation of some foundational reading skills and curriculum at our K2 level, and that is called UFLI. It's the University of Florida Literacy Institute, strong emphasis on phonics, and our teachers are doing a great job with that, so thank you. It's a lot of work as you're implementing something new, and they're doing a great job taking that on. So that's kind of, that's just an over, just a synopsis, because like I said, I think in November, our team will come and really kind of get into the details with the data. But as you do look at the data, really notice that we've seen some really nice growth. Middle school reading and math had some great gains. We had some nice gains really across the board and at all of the school sites, Bayview and Pike Lake, and then just some areas for growth as well. So hope, and we're addressing those, I believe, with our implementation of phonics. Some of the areas of growth would be reading, of course, and really implementing that at the, at the K2 level right now. Any questions or anything else that you'd like me to touch on?
No, thank you. Just, I will just add that one of the things Judy and I have been talking about is during lessons, teaching to the meet and exceeds. And Judy, if you could just touch on that just a little bit more because you're so much more eloquent than I.
Sure. So for example, I've met with Russ Davidson, and there's a document that the Minnesota Department of Education has developed. It's called the Benchmark Achievement Level Descriptors. And teaching to the meets and the exceeds level is really where we need to be at, because if we're teaching the standards and we're not teaching at those levels and they really describe what kids should know and be able to do, then that's, that's where we really need to get at. So Russ will be joining some of our curricular teams, he specializes in math, to help us really unpack that and what that looks like.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
All right. Yep, thanks.
Moving on to strategic plan, the workforce, there's just a couple of items. One thing is the state did provide us funding to increase counseling services. This is again us trying to get at some of those mental health issues. As we came out of COVID, they recognized the importance of this. And so what they did is they provided us enough money to get a .4 addition for our counseling position. So out at Pike Lake, it'll be .5, and at Bayview, .4. They already have a 1.0 FTE counselor there already. So that's the way that's going to break out. And then also, as we look at that, it's all about regulation and empathy and resilience in those lessons that you'll be hearing about a lot more when we get more counseling time in. So hopefully that's going to start very soon. We believe we have the right people in place, that you're going to be dealing with some resignations and some hiring documents here in the next couple of weeks. So just wanted you to be aware, and if you have any questions about that, don't be afraid to reach out. I'd be happy to talk about that more. On the facility side, we've had a ton of issues with the high schools' heating, cooling. It's hot when it's supposed to be cool and cool when it's supposed to be hot, and not in here. Can't talk about that in here. I'm sorry, it's a little chilly in here. It is. But the idea is, is that we have been, it seems like every time we fix one problem, we come up with another one. And it's all due to the fact that as you fix one issue, it changes the balance of the amount of air that's coming into the, to the building and then is getting kicked out. So in this case, we have a scent that is always present when Mr. Smith is doing lessons in his classroom, and it's just that scent of natural gas, if you will. And it's there for a reason. It's supposed to smell like rotten eggs, but it gets a little bit tiresome after a little while. There's some things called FREQ drives, F-R-E-Q, that we're getting soon. They're coming to us from, I believe, St. Mary's Ascension Hospitals in Duluth. As they start tearing down some buildings, we're going to be getting some of those FREQ drives, and we'll be installing them as quickly as we can. This is all about balance and ramping up motors at a certain rate in order to balance the airflow within the building. So my hope is that that's going to get, take care of that. Another thing that's interesting is we had a power outage at both schools, at both Bayview Elementary and Pike Lake Elementary today. It went off without a hitch. Those were done in order to get our solar panels up and running, and I'll let you know as soon as we start producing power from those. And then lastly, I think it was 1,700 feet of wire was pulled in the theater today as there, Steve put a team together today, I think it was today, to get the, the wire pulled. And what that's going to do is start allowing us to get the lighting system up and operational and state-of-the-art, and the sound is really getting close. And again, thanks to Steve and Randy and everybody else who's involved with that project. It's an unbelievable upgrade from where we were. You'll see it when you come there. I can't wait for you to see that. On the communication side, just again, in talking about what we do to communicate what we're doing with the schools and what's going on, we have a really great report card again from our web presence. It's good. Always wondering how we can do more. What can we do to be better? How can we get the message out there, the great things that are happening in Proctor Public Schools? So just want you to know that it's, it's on our minds all the time. We're trying to figure out ways to make that positive story so loud that you can no longer hear a negative one. And then on the Second Street project, progress, I'm not sure you want me to talk about the pigeon problem. We talked about that at a board meeting this summer, but I think for levity's sake, we're going to use that one at the end. But Knife Lake Masonry was there today, and they're starting to put the curb and gutter in for the last bits that they have to do before we can start, they can start the paving. So we're excited about that. Second Street is not going to be done though probably until after Halloween. We're hoping that all of the weather can hold up for us, and yes, you probably have seen snow and some signs of snow, and it makes them just as nervous as it makes us. So we're just hoping that gets done. The pigeon prob, see, I'm not even supposed to talk about it, I'll start choking. Pigeons are mostly fed by feeders within the community. So we thought that maybe it was because of spilled grain within the yard. It's not. It's because people are feeding in their, in their bird feeders. So the pigeon problem and the excess number of pigeons that have attacked the high school, you know, I said that we could use the trap team to get rid of them, but that probably was met with poor, like, we can't do that. But at the end of the day, that's where the pigeon problem is mostly coming from. So you asked a question, we hunted it down, and that's where we're at today. Anybody else have any questions or thoughts or wonders?
No. Well.
It's my employer, Ken Tomfo.
When I was just, I was just in Turkey. They have a place where they feed the pigeons, the pigeons go and they release their droppings, and they use it for fuel. Just, just a suggestion.
Are they tuppence a bag?
Sure, what they charge, but I did see the pigeon nesting area, and they, they were carting droppings out of there, and they use it for fuel, so.
My life just got better.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I like to be helpful.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Oh, one, one more thing. You'd be super proud of Jennifer today. She was one of the featured speakers in one of the breakout sessions with MSBA. They did a thing on superintendent evaluation, and you'll be very proud of her. She did a great job. And as I was walking out, one of the superintendents that was there said, "For real?" And I said, "For real." Yep, that's who she is. So thanks. Good job. Thank you. Yep.
Well, thanks. It was fun. It was, yeah, it was just, I presented with Barb last time, and so this was with John Ward, not related to Joe Ward. So just a different spin and a different, different angle at it, and it was fun. So. Does anyone have any questions for Carrie regarding his superintendent update details that you want him to elaborate on more or questions you have?
Madam Chair, I do have one question.
Sure.
We have that humongous granite rock out front of our school that they, they have found. Are we doing anything with that, exposing it, hiding it, blowing it?
We talked about doing two things with it. We're probably not going to be able to use dynamite on it because it would be expensive to bring them back. We do not have the type of, they brought that big breaker in that was on the front of the excavator and wrecked it. So we're not going to be using that. So the other idea was to cover it, somehow do something to cover it, or flat expose it and make it kind of a featured stone out there. But we're talking about those things right now, and we'll, we'll come up with a fun solution. It was my suggestion that we expose it, because when you try to do what we're doing right now, it just looks like somebody's going to hit that with a mower, right? So if we dug around it and exposed it a little bit more, it actually might look like the ledge rock that's actually attached all the way to the school building itself. It's kind of cool. So that's what we're talking about right now. Thank you.
Is it the same type that's over on the side next to like the field house that, maybe that's gone now? Oh, you, it used to be at by the field house. Actually, it's gone. We used to hang out on it. Well, no, but over by where the field house actually is, like by the, where the band room would come out, like there was all that exposed area. We used to sit on it. Yeah, never mind. It's gone.
Yeah, that and then, and then we do have a bunch of rock that we have to remove from the softball field still. So we're just talking about what we can do with those stones.
Thank you. Good question, Joe. All right. We'll move on then to the preliminary levy follow-up and I'll just open it up to Steve to shed some light on it. There's a document in your packet.
I just wanted to put it in your. I wanted to put it in your packet. Uh, when we talked at our last board meeting, we were expecting it to be about a four point two five. We expected it to be a four point two five increase. It came in at three seven four. And I just wanted to give you the document that normally we would have given you at the last meeting. It got cleaned up by the state after the meeting and we don't have to talk about it a whole lot. Just kind of want to let you know that it's better, it's already better than what we talked about.
Perfect. Thank you. Appreciate that follow-up. For the journal, I was like, is this it? Is this real? That's why I got the, you know, my packet. I'm like, okay, yeah, that's it. All right. Item eleven C MCA and fall benchmark data.
Referenced those earlier. Those are those items that are in your packet. If you do have any questions about them, uh, feel free to ask either Judy or I. Again, I always point to Judy because she's the one that's using this data then to make the decisions on curriculum that they're, and teaching and learning that they're using.
Thank you. Offhand, does anyone have any questions for Judy specifically regarding this data? All right, great. Um, let's see here. Item eleven D Superintendent Goal Setting. I added this to the agenda of, we need to set this date. Um, I included the um, the material from the booklets that we use when we did last year's superintendent uh, goal setting session in your packet. Um, we wanted to do it at the beginning of the school year and here we are. We're in month two here, the first part of October. So we should put a date on the calendar. Uh, the twenty-third, I think we have policy, correct? And the thirtieth, we have our event for the community. Just wondering if anyone, for the sake of timeliness and trying to get this done before November, would anyone be opposed to a meeting before the meeting on the thirtieth? Would that just be good to keep it? Okay. Um, that would be great. Uh, should we do like, if the, if our strategic plan meeting's at seven, should we do five or five thirty? I gave you guys the information because I don't know that it'll take us as much time to go through the process. If we have a chance to look ahead of time and know how you feel about things in our district that we're going to talk about together and come up with decision-making together on goals for the year for the superintendent. But I could do five, five thirty. I'm okay.
If we meet at five, that would give us enough time to sort of rearrange the room for our seven o'clock meeting. So.
All right, let's do five. Okay, perfect.
Pack a lunch, pack a dinner.
Pack a dinner. Perfect. Thank you, guys. Um, and I'll have handouts for everyone and um, we'll just revisit again. Uh, the quick, just like Barb did before, we'll do the, the uh, quick assessment of which standard you find most important. And I would encourage us maybe not to do four this time, maybe two, three, um, unless we think we want to do four. I think four is a lot and that's what John and I talked about today is that four is a lot. So I would say two or three, maybe two that each one of you are passionate about and maybe we can make three out of that. You know, just as we whittle things down.
Or one.
Or one, fine. So, so come with some ideas, but let's have a good conversation about board uh, superintendent goals and how they align with the strategic plan and what vision we have for the school district for the next coming year. And then at that point, I think we should just kind of pencil in maybe the first week of February, of first meeting in February to do our mid-year evaluation for Kerry and then follow it up in June. Good, good deal. Thanks. All right. Thank you, everyone. Um, strategic plan discussion. Have we sent out the RSVP memo? Okay. Anyone RSVPing yet? No, okay. So.
So the idea is that I'll be sending it out again and just with a, hey, just would really love to know if you're going to be able to come. The last one was more or less, you know, we're going to have the strategic plan meeting, uh, please come. And then this one will actually say, can you please let me know so that I can get some data back to the school board?
Perfect. I appreciate that.
I'll get that done probably Wednesday morning.
Perfect.
I also think it might be helpful if board members reached out to people and and called them and invited them rather than just getting an email. If, if, you know, I'll call, sorry, you know, I'm flailing.
Talk to Ted maybe?
Yeah. No, he's, he's in. It's on the calendar. Um, but but just to get, just to have people feel more involved and needed, I I think that's important.
Okay, so.
So if, because you can look at the email list when it comes out. If you would just say, I'll take these five people and call them.
Should we just divide them out?
Yeah.
And send them out? Can you have Lori do that for us tomorrow?
Down on Wednesday.
Oh, Wednesday, yeah. Sounds good.
Okay.
Perfect. So Lori, look for an email from Lori with your handful of people to reach out to and communicate. And she'll put the data or the information regarding who, what, when, where, why, so that we have it accurate and clearly communicated to our our participants. Thank you. Any other questions regarding strategic plan? Okay. Um, public relations update. As always, the Proctor Journal is very generous with their coverage of items relating to the district, including um, oh, a couple, one thing I just want to make sure we highlight is I hope that you all saw, um, Going Forward Fearlessly, Mason Archibald. That was actually in the News Tribune. Um, that's one thing I really wanted to point out. Um, I reached out to Mason's mom that morning and she didn't really have any idea what I was talking about. And I said, oh, you better read that before you go to work. And she goes, actually, I can't. I'm crying right now. So, um, I'll just talk to you later. Because she said she couldn't even because I, I must have sent some important message because I've known Mason since he was an infant. And and just the times that April and I have shared just about our kids. Um, she goes, all right, I can't, I can't right now. But I'm sure she got a boat load of of uh, amazing messages um, from um, just everyone in our community and outward. So um, that was good PR. Um, and as well, I just want to point out also that um, as far as a public relations update, area superintendents, like uh, Representative Les Nakar mentioned, she met with them to discuss the concerns as she already talked about, but just part of our PR update. Um, item twelve, reports, school board committee reports. I don't see any uh, from this time, but there will be a curriculum advisory to to follow for the twenty-third. And then we have a policy meeting coming up on the twenty-third as well. Enrollment report for October twenty twenty-three is in your packet. And item thirteen, communications, school board comments and observations. Uh, you can open it up with any school board celebrations or communications. From anyone, feel free.
I have my list.
Good deal.
I, I, Bayview people would know about this, but um, Trade Home Shoes contacted me last April and said that that there was a random drawing and that the kids closet was going to receive this shipment of shoes. And so I didn't think much about it. Well, then they called me in September and said they will be there on, I don't have the date in front of me, but whatever the date was. And could I meet them at the school? So they came in with forty-eight pair of brand-new Under Armour tennis shoes for the kids closet. Um, and they were, they're, they started at youth size thirteen and went up to size seven in boys and girls. Well, or some had pink and some did not have pink. So maybe I'll just say pink and not pink. And so far, seven students have taken advantage of that. Um, something will go into the Proctor Journal so that it will be advertised. And one of them was um, a, a parent at Bayview and the other one lives in the area. But they said that was the best part of their day. Trade Home Shoes does this annually. And so watch for that in the journal. You'll see that. Also, the Bayview Book Fair is coming. That will be October thirtieth through November third. So if any of you would like to think about your holiday shopping, um, that is coming up. Make sure you support the book fair. I'll start talking about the Reed Banquet now. It won't be until February, but if you'd like to be a sponsor or if you need tickets, make sure that you chat with me. And also, isn't this Friday, the Fall Fest at the Fairgrounds? I, I thought it was Friday. Yeah, it's Friday from four to something. I don't want to lie about the time, but but I know it's this Friday and it's going to be um, at the Rails Indoor. I still call it the Fairgrounds, but yes, so that's coming up. Oh, also, we all received our malet in our board packets. And so this is always a wealth of information. So make sure that you thank Nathan for this and his talented staff because it's always a pleasure reading about what they do. Um, I have been telling him for the last at least fifteen years that he needs to raise the price instead of the paltry three dollars that he charges. I've told him it needs to go to five, but he said he's leaving it at three just to irritate me. So, um, so I gave him my five dollar check. So. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board member comments, observations?
Madam Chair, I do have an item. First of all, I'll, I'll start it off by saying, wow, what a community we have. Um, we had an event, help me out Ted, I think it was Thursday. An event Thursday at our boys soccer senior night. And it was a fundraiser for one of our moms, um, who's going through her second battle of cancer in a year. Our community, the Cloquet community, who the Rails were playing that night, came together to raise about fifteen hundred dollars for the family that really needs it. Um, it was spectacular, the turnout. Um, I have a few people I want to thank and I'll, and I'll share the list with you uh, after. But I want to thank Ted and Rails TV. Um, I want to thank Tim for doing the play-by-play on Rails TV. I want to take, thank our announcer, Fleisch, um, for announcing that game and doing a spectacular job. We, our cheerleaders and our coach were amazing. We sold out of fifty fifty tickets. I've never ever done that at a fundraiser, but we ran out. It was incredible. Um, our boys team and coaches, uh, the Cloquet team and coaches and parents, our parents, uh, the Cloquet community, the refs and the, and the refting association were extremely helpful in allowing us to honor and honor Libby and um, bring awareness to leukemia cancer, which is the color orange. Soccer refs are very strict about what you can wear and they were very lenient for allowing our kids to put uh, orange tape on part of their uniform and and different things like that. So thank you to them. Um, the Proctor community, again, like I say, um, we had two sing, we've never had the national anthem in the last few years sung at any of our soccer games. We had two of our high school girls come and sing the national anthem. It was Addie Heeb and Jane Extrem. Do I have that right? Thank you. Um, and then we have the Proctor band there too. So it was, we filled the stands and it was, it was an amazing night. And uh, there were an entire team of people helping. Um, and I'm going to list a few of them that were, were there for me. Uh, Andrea Ruth, Nicole Lenz, Amanda Sinnet was working both with the fundraiser and for our seniors to make sure the senior night was a success. And then um, one person that was there every step of the way and had ideas for me and helped me along the way was Amy's own sister, Jill Coleman. She was like my right-hand person there. And it, it just turned out incredible. It, it was so amazing that one of the parents who has a junior asked, how do we continue this? And Anthony and I and some others are having conversations about how we do that. Um, we're pretty sure it's going to be with Cloquet because they were incredible. They had a team fundraiser with a, with a card for the Lindham family. So thank you to everybody that was there that night and everybody that supported us.
Thank you. Joe, you said you had a couple things. Is that just one thing? Okay, I thought you said a couple. Okay, all right. There's a lot. Yeah, no, I just want to make sure I wasn't just leaving you with your one item, but that, all the things. Wow, that's incredible. Really incredible. Thank you for sharing. Anyone else? Right? I do have something.
I'm sorry, I forgot one thing. Um, anybody that would like to, from here on, um, help out the Lindham family? There is a GoFundMe page. Um, and the title on that is Love for Libby. So um, I encourage anybody to go help out. Um, I spent a lot of that night with the Lindham family. I was a couple of years younger than her brother in high school and wow, what a family. We had an incredible time that night.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you for your um, your leadership in making sure that that happened for that family. Um, I do have one thing of just business nature. Uh, we received a message from the Minnesota School Board Association Insurance Trust. Uh, it's a proxy document that's um, so Kurt Schneiderwind is the proxy agent of, I guess, seeking for voting for the annual meeting. And so the district has an opportunity to vote or not vote for the candidates that have been brought forward. So we're not voting for specific people. We're just either exercising our vote or saying we decline to vote for that group of people. So for the election of trustees named in proxy statement, which is a four-year term, we can either vote positively for Corey Johnson and Mike Feel or we choose not to vote for them. If they're like a one, they're a, they're a ticket item. They're just one thing. Or, and then also, um, I'll just explain the election of a trustee named in proxy statement which expires in twenty twenty-four. The nominee is Deb Polly and expiring in twenty twenty-five, the nominee is Jim Firdin. So I'll just open it up and we'll just vote as a board and I'll submit this in. So all those in favor of voting for the four-year term of Corey Johnson and Mike Feel, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Those declining? Okay. And for the election of trustee named in proxy statement which expires in twenty twenty-four, nominating Deb Polly, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Declining? And election of trustee named in proxy statement expiring in twenty twenty-five, uh, voting for Jim Firdin, say aye.
Aye.
Declining? Okay. And that is that. Thank you for that. We'll just have the office send that out on our behalf. Um, I don't know that I have any other uh, board business for discussion. We'll turn it over to our student liaisons.
Hey, so. Good? Okay, so first off. Collected thirty-one units of blood, which is above, uh, usually we've been collecting twenty-five. Which saves around ninety-three lives. So we're going to have three more this school year. And if you guys want to donate, you can just send me an email. I can put you on schedule. Um, then Lionheart with their like motivational speakers that students really enjoyed last year. They're coming back and there'll be a night for the community members, like anybody from the community can come. And then I think they're doing uh, one-on-one with our teachers. And then there'll be a time during school for all the students to go down and listen to them speak again. Uh, and then I know we already talked about the Dobozinski fundraiser a couple of times, but um, that fundraiser is going really well so far. The cross-country team is, um, I mean, they're feeling support from everybody for that loss, for that family and stuff. So uh, just like that, the community is really coming together and when people are going through hard times and families and stuff, we're seeing a lot of support and um, just dedication to those part of us. So. And then homecoming was still fun, even though a lot of our events were canceled just because of the rain and the weather. But maybe we'll see them rescheduled. We don't know yet, but it was still fun. It's still a blast. And then uh, we talked about the Fall Fest and it sounds like they're going to be combining that with trunk or treat. Um, and just doing that at the same time. So the elementary schools. And lastly, a little plug from the All Night Grad Party Committee. They're selling rustic and pies. So if you guys want to buy those to support the seniors and their all-night grad party, that would be appreciated.
I was gonna start out by um, recognizing, or doing a shout-out to Mason Archibald. That was already covered.
You can cover it again. That's fine. Well, yeah, talk about, talk about how the students received it. That would be interesting. I wonder if he was like the star student of the day.
Yeah, he was just um, a shout-out. He's one of our own students, so that's pretty cool. Um, for his, he was recognized by the Duluth News Tribune for his achievements in cross-country, uh, which was pretty cool. Um, also, homecoming week was a great success, both the dance itself and spirit week. Um, and I know that a lot of students have voiced that they would very much appreciate and are hoping for an event uh, to kind of replace the events that we missed, the bonfire and the parade. I was, believe me, I was bombarded by my friends about that. So. I was, believe me, I was bombarded by my friends about that, so... And lastly, the Drama Club is going on their annual Guthrie Trip tomorrow, which I will be on, and we're all super excited, so that's all I got. Great, thank you.
Madam Chair, there is an opportunity for student liaisons on October 24th to go down to Shakopee, and Lynn Peterson has volunteered from the board to chaperone your trip down there. If the four of you would like to go, she would love to take you. You have to leave about 5:30 in the morning to get down there on time for the festivities, but I bet you can get out of bed if you'd like to. So, if you could, please talk to Kalen and to, right? Right, Kalen, did I say the right name? Always wrong. And then Eden, also, okay? October 24th, it's a Tuesday. Okay? And again, I know you guys are hyper-busy with activities. You probably have a swim meet, and Reagan probably has play practice, and, I mean, right? It's just, it is what it is, but please just kind of share that with them. It's school governance, and what they're doing is they're trying to reach out to, this is Minnesota School Board Association, is reaching out to student liaisons to make sure that they know and understand how they can be supported and how they can be more proactive in their work with the school boards that they're serving. So, if you can do that, that'd be just fantastic. But I get it, I get it. You guys are hyper-busy, so, yeah. So, just let me know if you can, okay?
You'll be back probably, I think it ends at about 3:00, so you'll be back here sometime
a little bit after supper. So, 6:00, 6:30. The trip or the date? I thought it went till 3:00. It goes till 1:00. You'll be home sooner. I don't know. Well, I actually have it in a flyer that I can look at, so if you want to stop by the office on Wednesday, I'd love to let you know more about it. Thanks.
She drives a little Volkswagen Beetle, zoom, zoom. She had a scooter in the summer. Oh, thank you for sharing your update. I appreciate it. The board appreciates it. Township and City Communications, we got our street update. Anything else to speak of?
And we took care of the PAC lease today.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes. We're good there. All right. Anything further to discuss before our final motion, which would be to adjourn? I'll entertain that motion.
So, by Amy?
There's a motion by Amy. Is there a second? I can second that. Any final questions? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, that motion carries, we're adjourned at 7:52. Thank you.
We're at a crossroads. From time to time, a section of rail needs repair, but that doesn't mean the whole line needs replacement. The same way being proud of your history doesn't mean you're stuck in the past. No, we're not stuck. We hear the whistle blowing, and we're inspired. Inspired by the legacy of the people who transformed this terrain into a rail yard that supplied America with the ore needed to win world wars. We're inspired by our unshakable identity, hanging tight, like David facing down Goliath, and we're moved by stories of our community's kindness. No matter who needs help, neighbors pitch in and get the job done. Hushed and humble, there are more at play than pontification, but don't for one second